Let's pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we are blessed to be before you in the presence tonight. We just thank you for being here with our citizens, Lord, protecting our county. Lord, we just pray for wisdom and discernment tonight, Lord, and all the comments that are made. Lord, you gave us ears to listen, Lord, tonight. We're going to do that. And we just pray, Father, that you would be in the middle of this meeting. In Jesus' name we ask this. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, whose every power, which is sacred, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with great freedom and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to call off the referendum against the four commissioners on May 20th, 2019, to order. If you look at the agenda in front of you, the first item of business is approval of the amendments, which are none. We do that at our first meeting in the month. So we'll move on to the agenda adjustments. Are there any adjustments to the agenda as presented? Here, here, none. Do I have permission to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made in second. I'll lose favor say aye.
Aye.
Call opposed. Okay, first order of business is delegations. We have, I don't believe we have any nice delegations for this evening, but we do have unannounced.
If I please sign up. I do have a comment that was sent to me, and I was asking if you may.
Those of you who signed up comments, we do have a five-minute time limit that we'll keep track of. There's numerous people who would like to speak, and we want to make sure everyone gets a chance to voice our opinions, so we'll be keeping time. State your name and address when you start your speech. Okay. County manager.
This is from Rename Guinness. She says, "I do have some concerns with the current proposed budget that I would like to see addressed by the board for the citizens. As currently proposed, one-tenth of the general fund budget is for the rescue squad. I would like to know if the rescue squad has been audited, and if so, has it been closely reviewed by the county board? Also, the additional fifteen cent tax would cover the approximate 1.3 million allocated for the rescue squad. Therefore, if the general tax is not decreasing, where is the previously budgeted $410,000? I would like to think that the county board of commissioners and our county administration are good custodians of the taxpayers' money, and prior to budgeting this amount of our money, have done their due diligence. I praise the rescue squad for the service they provide our county citizens, and have no issue with funding them, but they are funded with this amount of taxpayer money that needs to be audited, just like the county departments." You have my permission to read this at the county board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have the list? Okay, first name on the list is Anne Howard.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Anne Howard. I live at 29 White Oak Road, New York City, 27935. And I'm here just to give you a little bit of information. I am a member, have been a member of the Betsadida chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, in Elizabeth City for, I believe, since 2003. And as everyone knows, our citizens are getting older, we're not getting new members, and we have had to disband that chapter. Most of our members that are from Gates County have joined Bets, Eden, the party chapter in Eden. There were three of us, Kathleen Ingram, who was vice regent from Belvedere, my daughter Terry Roberts from Ahoski, who was secretary, I have been treasurer. And we have had, not been able to move our membership until just last week because we had to disperse the funds that we had. We did not want funds to go back to the state V A R. We wanted them, we wanted to decide what happened to the funds. And so that's the reason I'm here tonight. The tree of life that will be displayed in the old courthouse, I believe, is $300 for a leaf. There will be a leaf on that in the name of Betsadida chapter V A R. There is a Confederate marker, and I believe, right man, they're kind of holding off on that because of situations with other Confederate things. But we gave $200 to pay for the Confederate marker. We gave $75 to the Gates County Library to buy possibly two genealogy books to go in the genealogy room. And I found, now, this is all for Gates County. We've done things in other counties, Elizabeth City, Eden, and so forth. But for the Gates County Historical Society, we presented a check for $1,750. With the other 500, that's a total of $2250. And I'm very proud to say that that decision was not made. I mean, we didn't have any question about what we wanted to do. We wanted the courthouse to be, to get a good part of it. The members that are still living in Gates County are Edith Solly, Peggy Lefler, Cynthia Wagner, Annie Margaret Ranford, and of course Kathleen Ingram, the vice regent from Belvedere, my daughter Terry, and myself. And like I said, most of us have joined. I think there's only one of the Gates County members who is going at large, which means she'll be a member, but not of any chapter or have any voting rights or anything. The only thing left to do, and I tried today to get in touch with someone at the bank in Elizabeth City to confirm that all the checks have come back in, that, oh, I can close it, I completely, but I could not get, called two people, no one answered, no one called me back. So as soon as that's done, it will be finalized. And I trust that this money will be used wisely. I've been told that we will be told what it was used for when it is decided. And it was a great pleasure for me to be a part of that. I'm still very interested in it, and I wish a lot of others were as well. But I hope that the county will appreciate what we've done. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next, Earl Ranford.
Is it me?
Yes, sir.
That's not the past. Earl Ranford, 226 Folly Road, Southern, North Carolina. I'm not going to spend a great deal right now discussing these details. We might get into this the next hour, the next speech. But first of all, let me say we got a lot of rescue squad people here. To all the people that have been involved that I talked to, I've been on the phone all day long. My phone has rang all day long, and I'm not in the county officially. But no one has absolutely nothing bad about the rescue squad. This is really not about the rescue squad. It's about funding the rescue squad. And we know we have to fund it. And the question is, is how, and my big question is, I completely disagree, and I put this on Facebook, the way you commissioners, and I addressed this to you, funded it. And I hope we look back because, you know what, is involved with funding. But let me give you some quick, I don't check my watch, Linda BB now. Facts. Number one is, it was, was put out that the average cost to taxpayers was $180. That's what's on my computer. Let me say this, and I didn't recalculate this, the county manager, we kind of guessed at the number early on. But per household, per household, $1.3 million per household works out to $265 tax increase. But that's, even that is misleading. It's because we have just me, no more than I got, living off of fixing them, and not much money, but it costs, it's going to go up. Mine is going to go up $200, I mean, $675. And I think all of y'all got a problem, and you know it. How are we going to solve this problem? I don't know. And I don't like to come up and complain about something I don't have a solution to. And I hope that Mr. Jack Owens don't mind me using this, because we did briefly discuss this, if we had a solution, if I had a solution, what the solution would be. And that's what we got to work on. But it really has nothing to do with the rescue squad. It has to do with the way it's funded and how much money is involved. Some of the people in this county, tax deals are going up, I know, you know, in the thousands of dollars. And the people that are farmers and chicken house owners, they're going up, and that's just an increase, you know? That's just an increase. And I checked around real quick, and let me share this. I asked Wade, ask you, Wade, does Purdue give you extra money to pay your taxes because the county is up to taxes? He said, "No." All real fact, I put on Facebook, and I repeat it. The farm income is down 20 percent, and we're going to increase taxes 15 percent. And so we got a problem. And I will say, I won't say anything more about it at this time, but the next time I'll go back and tell you what I think was wrong, and why I'm 100 percent against the way it was done. And I think y'all already know that, but I'll tell you later.
Thank you. Okay, Deidre Gaines and Erica Rock.
Yes. Hi, good evening, commissioners and county manager and county clerk. My name is Deidre Gaines, and I am a senior at William Peace University in Raleigh, North Carolina. I'm also Gates County native. I live in Gates, area zip code 27937. I just wanted to come up here and talk about an event that myself along with Erica will be hosting on Saturday, June 1st, through the Golden Leaf Scholars Leadership Program. So through the Golden Leaf Scholars Leadership Program, I've had the opportunity to intern here in the county two years ago, and Erica can elaborate more on our event.
So we are hosting a civic engagement day for northeastern North Carolina, us along with two other college students, one of which is from North Hampton County. So we want to collaborate with county commissioners in Gates County, Perford County, and North Hampton County, as well as surrounding counties in northeastern North Carolina, to increase civic engagement throughout our counties, especially among, amongst the youth, which is like the 18 to 25 range and a little bit older, because the voter turnout rate for those age groups is rather low. So we are proposing that we have a county commissioner for Gates County attend that event to help us increase that participation.
So so far, we have participants from North Hampton County, Perford County, at both the county and municipal levels attending. We also have a few members of the General Assembly who may attend as well. And we think that it would just be an honor to have you guys show up, since as a native of Gates County, it'll be nice to have that representation there. If you have any further questions, I would be glad to, I'm planning to reach out via email, and I also have a flyer, I think, that will provide to the county manager.
Okay, where is the one detail?
Oh, Renegy Chuan. So the event is being held at Renegy Chuan Community College in Ahoski, North Carolina, on Saturday, June 1st, starting at 10:30 a.m. This event is, has been funded by the Golden Leaf Foundation. We received a micro grant to host the event.
Okay, are you, would you like for us to come speak, or just to attend?
So, both, I think it would be nice, but also if one of you were willing to just speak for about 10 minutes about your, your job, and how long you've been serving in the role as commissioner, and just an example of how the policies that you've put in place have affected the county over the years, and just, not a lot of young people know exactly what it is a county commissioner does, so.
Okay, just explain your role as a county commissioner, explain how your work has translated to, like, think that students or young people may see the day-to-day cases like schools or communities and stuff like that.
Well, thank you, and I, and if we, do we need, how do we get in touch with you?
So I can be contacted via email. I plan to just send an email out to you all tomorrow.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
I should show you again.
Okay, Marilyn Harrell.
Good evening. Marilyn Harrell, 259 Gates Bank Road, Gates, North Carolina. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I'm up here to speak on the EMS budget and the requests that they have forward. And first of all, I'll say I have used EMS in the past. I remember when they were running around in the Ghostbuster mobiles back in the 60s. So been associated with it a long time. I was 32-year member of Station 30 Gates Fire Department, worked hand-in-hand, have absolutely no problem with what they do. But I do think there is some sort of efficiencies that could be gained in the budget somehow. And I'm not saying I'm that person to do it, I'm not qualified to look at their budget, I'm not a money person. But so far as their requests that they currently are submitting for the additional funds, I've got some thoughts that I would like to present to the commissioners and the rescue to think about. And, you know, in the past, for fire service, we do it per household in Gates County. That's how the fire departments are funded, is a set of mine per household, and it's not a whole lot. So you've got the same situation, you have fire trucks that cost a half million dollars, just like a fully outfitted ambulance. And fire departments in this county get somewhere in the neighborhood of 16,000 to 20,000 in the year, I believe, to keep the lights on, put the same price diesel fuel in the trucks that probably get less fuel mileage. And they have to have fundraisers and strakes for everything they do, instead of just saying, "I want something new." I see that as a problem. For me, as a small business owner, as a property owner, timber owner, what is my return on my investment that I'm going to get versus somebody else over here who lives in a very, let's say, minimalistic avenue? Am I going to get a faster ride to the hospital? Am I going to get a better ambulance ride? No, I'm going to get the best, because that's what we've always had, that's what we always get. I don't think the price should be based on what you own or what you make. If I go to the doctor and you go to the doctor, we're both expecting to say, pay the same price for that doctor services. If I go to the hospital and you go to the hospital, we're both expecting to pay the same price for that hospital visit. I've never been to a hospital and on a check-in sheet where I have to fill out the emergency room, I have to put down what I own or how much I make. I think that's ridiculous. You know, this, this is a way I've, uh, thought, which if you know me, you know, that's highly within my capability. But, you know, if EMS needs that much money from the county, and I understand what we're, what you're facing, I think, to some extent, currently lawsuits over any and everything. Does EMS at some, in some way, need to be part of the county staff? That they need to be operated by the county, come under the county guidelines, just like a county employee? That would, you know, would that cut out some problems? Would that take some pressure off of the emergency medical services to allow them to run the business and not have to try to figure out how to run it, how to fund it? I'm going to fall back on one that I heard Mr. Ranford say. I'm not an audit person, but where is the money going that they're currently getting? I heard that in Renee's letter that was read also. Where is that money going? You know, are there efficiencies that could be gained? Because could the rescue squad, which I don't know how much fuel they burn a day, probably 100 gallons or above, could they partner with DOT and get fuel at a cheaper rate? You know, anything to help bring to the current cost down. I think different avenues need to be explored before we go in on this limited trail that we're currently seeing we'll be on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next on the list is Carl Ward.
Good evening, commissioners, county managers, state county board, I would also like to speak on EMS budget. I have a few questions. I've watched Norman's presentation on Vimeo, and he stated that it did lose money. And I understand, Fire Department's EMS is the dollar across currently lose money, that's just what they do. It's a necessary management policy. You don't need everything, but you also need. And the county does need to fund it. I'm in here, I'm not here to say we don't need to fund it. However, there's some things that we need to look at. Unit utilization numbers. I was not, I didn't, I was not afforded that opportunity to delve into it, I can't find it. Nationwide, unit utilization is about 33 percent on medicines. If ours are higher than that, then that predicates you need to do management, all right, and additionally. If your numbers are less than 33 percent-ish for each particular unit that you have, then there's absolutely no need. You just need to make it more efficient in the way you do business. And I understand that our transport for 20 minutes was like, I get that. I do. I think utilization should cover that amount of time when they're going to look for the Does this money include the purchase of a new medicine? I was unaware, I didn't know if it did or not. Average medicines about $220,000 not outfitted. New minors about $75,000. And this is what I do for Riverside, I've got these numbers. New minors about $75,000. Ludicrous flights about $15,000. Probably $130,000, $150,000. I would ask for me staff, if it's staffed double paramedics, you can staff, we staff a double paramedic unit where I work 24 hours a day, 360, for 360-ish thousand dollars. That's what it would cost you to staff it with double paramedics. I have no idea what their staffing model is. They, they provide a great service. Every time I'm called, they've always come. It's, it's never been a problem. I just think there's some questions we need to ask. I'm not saying don't fund them. I just think we need to ask more questions to make sure we're making a responsible decision before we just give the number of that 15 cent dollar amount. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank each of you who's come up here, and no decisions have been made about how it's going to be at this time. This is why we are having these meetings, we're having a meeting tonight, we're going to have a meeting Tuesday night, Thursday night, working on budget. So there's nothing carved in stone yet. So that's something I hope everyone will keep in mind. Okay, we'll go back to the agenda presentation. There are no administrative reports because this is the second meeting of the month, no public hearing, no old business. Okay, next is new business, induction of personnel policy.
You have before you a memo that outlines the personnel policy recommendation. Currently, Gates County has a personnel ordinance, and it has had several revisions. As part of the MAPS group study that was conducted in 2018, they recommend a new personnel policy for the following reasons. Wherever possible, standard language has, that has stood the test of time, grievance lawsuits, et cetera, in multiple jurisdictions, that approaches to address major policy issues attempting to strike a balance between providing clear policy guidance to county and departmental managers while staying away from detailed procedures that tend to enfeeble rather than empower effective management decision-making. Changes in any policy or benefits are recommended either based on, one, best practices in the private and public sectors, two, what's considered competitive practices in your market, and, or, three, modern and effective personnel practices. Most attorneys recommend adopting personnel policy by resolution and comment of policy rather than ordinance. The recommendation is based upon a court case, Kittman versus Wilson County, which stated the policies adopted by resolution retain the at-will status of employees. At-will means employees serve at the will of pleasure of the employer, and no policies or procedures change that. The benefits of at-will employment is that the county's legal liability is potentially reduced in the case of termination or management error. The disadvantage is that charged employee loyalty and therefore motivation productivity is not generally as high in at-will organizations, because employees view the employer's loyalty and commitment to them in their careers weak. The employees in DSS are not considered at-will, and thus, the county may wish to make a decision regarding taking all the advantages and disadvantages into account. At-will language is currently included in the policy. Key changes that I want to note is that employers hire, employees hired or promoted in the pay range at hiring range will receive a salary increase to the minimum rate upon successful completion, completion of probationary period. Example, employees will still earn flex time, but the timeframe has been changed. Only a maximum of 37 and a half hours may be earned and carried forward. No time may be approved over 37 and a half hours. Flex time will expire on December 31st, and there is no compensation for accrued flex time. Uncolored employees will earn one hour of time per day, Monday through Friday, and two hours on Saturday and Sunday. Currently, this is not consistent across all departments. Longevity pay is recommended. The policy recommendation is to no longer provide insurance to retirees to those hired after July 1st, 2019. This is due to the rise in cost of insurance. Currently, employees working on holidays receive holiday time to be used at a later date. Typically, those working holidays are in departments where comp time may be an issue. The policy states the employee will receive time hours off or be paid. Both are in the policy in case there is a funding issue and the county is unable to pay for holiday. The recommendation is to pay those working on holidays in fiscal year 20. Vacation leave accrual is slightly increased. Funeral leave, civil leave, and civic leave have been added, and the personnel board is abolished. If a public hearing will need to occur on June the 5th to repeal the current personnel ordinance, followed by a resolution to approve the personnel policy. Do you have any questions? And we can also discuss this during the budget meetings, following this week, as some of these numbers do relate to the budget.
Okay. Are the questions on the board?
I see at the top of the second page, it says at-will language is currently included.
Yes.
And for the DSS side over there.
For everyone.
Okay.
So it consists of cross all of us?
Yes, but DSS are not considered at-will because they have to follow the State Human Resources Act, and they do have different procedures for this, as well as hiring.
Do you have anything with you to speak to longevity pay?
What specifically?
Well, just, I mean, if just as longevity pay is recommended, I didn't know that there's any, we can discuss later the budget if you want to.
The.
Pretty much what the MAPS had in mind, is what I think.
Full-time employees of the county are compensated for continuous years of service with the county by payment of a longevity supplement based on the continuous years of service as of December 1st of each year. Continuous service, continuous employment including any approved leave or involuntary reduction enforced. Collected and appointed officials are not eligible to participate in longevity pay plan. And the MAPS, years of service between five and nine years is $200, 10 to 14 years is $400, 15 to 19 years, $600, and 20-plus years, $800.
To the skip.
Yes.
Now, the policy in the personnel board, is there, excuse me, is there any type of grievance committee or anything that's going to be established, if employees have a grievance?
Yes, it's outlined in, I believe, the last section.
It's on Article 10 of the policy.
Okay. And it stands as is. It stands as is.
This is a new grievance policy, which is very similar to what we currently have. And if you have it with you, it's in this Article 10, it starts on page 23.
And we can discuss this Tuesday night, Thursday night as well, in case you, as you read over it, if you see something else.
If we do that, then we can get our hearing announced for you.
Everything's, I mean, we've already had to submit because the deadlines for news records changed because of the dates they publish now.
Anything else? Okay, moving along, budget amendments.
Good evening. You should have in your packet, budget amendment sixty-two and sixty-three.
Yes.
Budget amendment sixty-two was to move money when the solar water position had to be re-advertized.
Okay. As you see, mayors take the salary and office supplies to agree that we have money for the advertising. Why is the...
The fifty-nine is not sold loans, sorry?
Oh, I have sixty-two.
So fifty-nine is in your book.
Okay.
Fifty-nine is to move funds to cover repair and vehicle expenses because there is a lapse in hiring a part-time custodian, moving money from there to cover the vehicle and the repairs and supplies. And if you'd like, we can go through all of them. You can approve them at that time.
Well, I think probably we can approve all of the ones since we went through those. Okay, number sixty?
Number sixty is to budget for the essential single-family rehabilitation on program sixteen as well as the disaster recovery funds for some additional funding that we have received. Those are the grant programs for housing. Sixty-one is to re-allocate the funds to cover the shortfall in contract services. And then sixty-two and sixty-three.
That we have on my table, you know?
Correct. And sixty-two is going to be outlined to say that it covers the advertising, free advertisement of the district administrative specialists for solid water.
Sixty-three?
Sixty-three, that is to cover, the Board of Elections has to host a public seminar as to whether advertising in a county will be reimbursed for these expenses.
And this is a state mandate. This is not one that was expected.
So we have a budget minutes fifty-nine or sixty-three. Why is the question forward?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we allocate the funds as described in Budget Revision fifty-nine, sixty-two, sixty-three.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made. Second, any discussion?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. In reference to number sixty-three, does that a hundred percent reimburse the back in state? Okay, do we know?
We have no idea when that money will be reimbursed.
The state operates on its own.
But do we have a date yet for that seminar?
I think it's June, early Jan.
I, I haven't seen anything about it, that's why.
It's not been advertised because they just found out, this was brought Friday afternoon to our office.
Okay. Um, any additional questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, that's the time. Okay, surplus request.
These are, these can all also be done together and approved. The first is the tax office has a desktop printer that no longer is working, wish to sell. Everything will be sold on GovDeals. The tax office also has a Canon copier that is a black and white copier. It is starting to have problems. It has already been replaced with another copier from another department that was not being used. Tax office also has an older Printronix Matrix printer that is no longer being used as well, along with some other supplies that go along with it, such as the ink and the printer paper. And there's also a large wooden six-door desk from DSS that is no longer used by them and is not being, because of the size and the condition, by anyone else in the county.
Okay, so you see several printers and odds and ends to go to GovDot deals. Some have reserves, some do not. What is the budget of the board?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that we take the four items mentioned here and follow through with recommendation to send them to GovDeals.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, a motion's been made. Is second, any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am, I would like to, just for clarification purposes, you know, some of them have minimum bid and some do not. Is that just by random or?
Some of them are so old, I cannot find anything else listed on GovDeals. That was similar to the age.
And we wanted to move.
Something is better than nothing.
And, and one of these printers, the Printtronix P5000, we've had since nineteen ninety-three. I'd say it's becoming, well...
But that does have a minimum opening price.
Right, because we do know that there is paper along with that. And there was, we, I did see something similar to that that had a bid, a part of that, right?
Okay, is everyone prepared? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Those four items are approved. Okay, at this time, we have, May is the Older Americans Month of two thousand and nineteen. We have proclamation. Commissioner Owens, would you like to read the proclamation?
I'll do that for you. Older Americans Month, two thousand and nineteen, a proclamation. Whereas Gates County includes a growing number of older Americans who enrich our community through their diverse life experiences, and whereas Gates County is committed to strengthening our community by connecting with and supporting older adults, their families and caregivers, and acknowledging their many valuable contributions to society, and whereas Gates County recognizes the importance of bringing together all generations and engaging in activities that promote physical, mental, and emotional well-being for the benefit of all. And whereas Gates County can enhance the lives of older Americans in our community by promoting home and community-based services that support independent living, involving older adults in community events and other activities, and providing opportunities for older adults to work voluntarily, learn, lead, and mentor. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Gates County do hereby proclaim May two thousand and nineteen to be Older Americans Month. We are a generous resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and the people who serve them as essential and valuable members of our community, dated this twentieth day of May, two thousand and nineteen.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, do I have a motion to approve this resolution or proclamation?
So move.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. From the oldest to the youngest. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, at this time, what a lot of people are here to listen to is our budget presentation from her, her take on what about the budget.
And before I proceed, I just find a tentative file, a date for the voter ID public seminar. And I said, this is tentative based on information I have. It will be Wednesday, June the nineteenth, at twelve o'clock at the Mill Pond. It's free and open to the public, but you have to RSVP by June the seventh, to Board of Elections. And that number is three-five-seven-one-seven-eight-zero.
Can you email that to?
I will get confirmation that it's going to be and then I will get it sent out. Like I said, that's tentative. They can also depend on when she got it, if they were to get it in the newspaper for proper advertising. In accordance with the North Carolina Local Governmental Budget and Fiscal Control Act, the Administration Department has a separate budget request, revenue estimates, and financial information supplied by various officials, officers, employees, and agencies of Gates County. From these sources, a budget has been prepared for consideration by the Board of Commissioners. The recommended budget is balanced and complies with General Statute one hundred and fifty-nine dash eleven. A copy of the budget has been filed with clerk to the Board of Commissioners and is available for public inspection. Copies are available via media in Gates County as well as on the Gates County website and the Gates County Public Library. Not later than ten days after the presentation of the budget message and not later than July first of two thousand and nineteen, the Board of Commissioners must adopt a budget ordinance making appropriations, estimate revenues, handling taxes for the budget year. A public hearing on the fiscal year twenty budget is scheduled for Wednesday, June the fifth, during the regularly scheduled Board of Commissioners meeting at ten a.m. The information presented in this report should be considered and studied in detail. Additional information will be presented to the Board of Commissioners during the budget work sessions. And they are Tuesday, May twenty-first, beginning at five-thirty, and Thursday, May twenty-third, beginning at five-thirty, and they will be here in the courtroom. They are work sessions, therefore there's no public comments during those sessions. Key budget highlights. The total budget value reports with the North Carolina legal standards. The property tax rate of seventy-six cent per one hundred dollars in assessed value will remain the same with an estimated ninety-seven percent collection rate for property and motor vehicle taxes. An additional tax of fifteen cent per one hundred dollars in assessed value with estimated ninety-seven percent collection rate for property and motor vehi, vehicle taxes will be assessed to fund the EMS request to fully staff an additional ambulance in addition to the one ambulance currently fully staffed at a total cost of one million, two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars. The total budget is seventeen million, five-hundred-and-five thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars, of which thirteen million, seven-hundred-and-twelve thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-four is general fund. Health insurance rates increased by eight percent. I am recommending merit raises for all employees that are eligible and were recommended by Department Hills to receive them, and this has been included, included in the departmental budget. Included in the budget is funding for implementation of year two of salary study. The county manager's salary was reviewed during the salary study with a recommendation being made. However, most salary changes have been made to the county manager's salary. Commissioner salaries were not included in the salary study. Two new positions are included in the budget, one full-time dispatcher and one, one full-time accounts payable receivable. A line item has been created to establish a retirement insurance reserve as suggested by owners. The proposed personnel policy includes holiday pay as well as longevity. Both are included in the proposed budget. I recommend a solid wage fee be renewed from the monthly water bill and placed on the tax bill for the Gates County Code of Ordinance as Title V, Public Works, Section fifty, solid wage. Fee increases have been recommended and are attached, the ones which will affect current customers are a rec, are a recommended increase in base water fee from ten dollars to twelve dollars, base sewer fee from twenty dollars to twenty-four dollars, service fee from twenty-five dollars to forty dollars, and a cut, seal, or lock fee from fifteen dollars to twenty-five dollars. I'd like to express my appreciation to the Board of County Commissioners for their participation and input in the budget process, as well as to the department directors and agency leadership for a budget submission at this time of year.
Thank you, uh, Madam Manager, at this time. Before we talk about the budget, there's something else I would like to bring up that has been, some of you who've been to our county four weeks before know that this topic comes up periodically. Um, the Board of Commissioners and our county manager are working with superintendent and the Board of Education concerning the community center. And right now, that is under control of the Board of Education. We're looking to buy, whether it would be more, that it would be advisable to have that under control of the Board of Commissioners. Uh, there is a, we have been requested on numerous occasions concerning senior centers. Uh, we're looking at using that part of that building to, for that activity. We think sometimes the building is unutilized at different parts of the day. Uh, hi, oh, this will not be in this budget, but it's something that we work on for the next year to deal with, the switch over, because it could be switched immediately. So we're looking at using, um, the coming year to go through that process. Uh, so I just wanted to make you aware that those of you who are concerned about senior activities and all, we are going to try to address that. It's not going to be immediate, but we are going to try and address that in the coming year. Okay. Um, comments, I mean, questions, things that you want to request for, as we go forward in these budget meetings? I'm sure all of you have gotten some phone calls. It's not on the street.
Plenty of phone calls and there's some of them here in the room. And I thank you, you folks, for, for your phone calls and for your, your input. And most of the calls, like ninety-nine, twenty-nine percent, have been about EMS funding. And, and I think those are legitimate concerns. You know, you, you need to know the facts and that's what we're, we're working with. And, and we'll be discussing those. You know, again, our, our budget is, right now, is presentation and then we hit the workshop. Carol, thank you for some of the information that you gave us. And, and we may, we'd probably be reaching out, asking some information that it's a, this is a hard peel. And we all, you know, we heard positive comments here about the rescue squad. The calls that I got were positive calls about the rescue squad. It's just pure dollars and cents is what the calls are about. But, you know, it's our job to address that and we'll address it the best we can. And I did tell Earl, I said, you know, Earl, we're looking, we're looking for solutions. I think that's what I told you, right, Earl? We're looking for solutions and, and sometimes a solution comes from right out there. So if you want to have a voice in this, we want you to have a voice in it. And, and if you know something you think that we're not seeing, or something that you like for us to dig deeper into, Natalie, how do you want to get in touch with you?
They can send comments. I do not respond. They will read comments generally from Facebook. I have received several comments today. Will you please read this or explain this? I do not answer on Facebook. That is not the form to conduct public business. If you have a question, email me or call and I can respond that way. If they have questions, like I said, tomorrow, beginning at five-thirty, they can submit everything and then some of those might be questions that the Commissioners, as we're going through the budget book, they might have those same sorts of questions. I know only one department has responded that they would like to come and speak with you tomorrow night at six o'clock. I know that based upon a conversation, Chief Budson and I have a comment today that I expressed to him, you might request that they come to answer some questions as well.
And I think that probably will be wise. I've had numerous people wanting to know your sources of revenue at, in current year, what percentage they, what sources and how, what percentage of the budget they are, and your cost of operations, and all that we need to know.
Right, and, and one other thing too, I wasn't really going to get that specific, but some of the questions I've had have been Medicare. How much Medicare is the rescue squad receiving? How regular are they receiving it? Are the receivables from Medicare, are they behind? You know, they, they can be a little slow. I think we've heard that when we were talking to the rescue squad people. You know, I don't want to call how many board members rescue and EMS has, but there's, I see four here in the, in the meeting. And one of the things I've shared with a couple of people who've called me or more is that board, to me, if you look at those names and you look at those faces, it's people that are high integrity people in this county. And they want the absolute best for the taxpayers, for the rescue squads, and for the rescue squad, and for the people who need the services of the rescue squad. So their part in the game, their skin in the game is heartfelt. I know that and I trust, I trust those gentlemen to bring the best product forward as far as I'm concerned. As far as the Rescue Squad, I'm glad that they serve on that board, and if we have a question from you, we're going to ask them that question, because they're, they're out there to help and be a part of the solution. So, and I'm sure that they will entertain our questions and help us with that. But you know, here in this room, and I don't mean to be sucking all the oxygen out of you, but, but you know, there may be three, there may be three suggestions or recommendations that come from this group right here that may mean several thousand dollars. Please don't sit on your idea or your thought. Don't hesitate to send it. And if you don't want to send an email to Natalie, call one of us, we'll take your call and we'll push it forward. Thank you.
As, as we all sit here together, we see how important it is, the budget is important. It's not our budget, it's certainly your budget, and we have to look at it, and we do look at it in those regards at all times. But make no mistake, the reason you're here and the reason we've been getting calls is for tax increases. Make no mistake, that's what it's all about. So we have to address that as you have to address it. So we do know that's what it's about. We can think of so a lot of other things, but obviously and truly, it is a tax increase that brings you here and brings the calls to us, so.
I'll be a lot less brief than Jack was. Nobody in this room wants to pay higher taxes. I don't want to pay higher taxes. I've done the math, I know how much my mortgage payments are going to go up each month. I tend to be a numbers guy, so county manager's task was providing a balanced budget, she has done that. The book is very big that she has to do, and it takes a lot of hard work on her behalf. But I know what my mortgage payment's going to go up to, and I look around the room and I can figure out real quick how much some of your mortgage payments will go up to, and you know, higher taxes are a lot to a lot of people. Our citizens deserve the best that we can give them, it's just a matter of doing what we can to give the best to our citizens with what little we have. Until we get some increased tax revenue in the county, we're limited, but we'll see what we can do in the next few days.
Okay, thank you. And like I say, it's nothing all off the table. I know some of you have been doing, taking them in under the umbrella of county. That certainly could be an option, would that save us money or not? You know, there are, do we could look for a contract? I know some counties do that. Nothing off the table. We want to do the best we can to provide the best service we can, but we also have to look at the dollars. So we are, we're going to try to do some balance and act Tuesday for the earnings year and see what we can come up with. Okay. Any more, Barbara?
Now, there may be not too many here about Kevin possibly knew that, except for the EMS board and, and the director, that this was brought forward to us a few years ago and began to address it. And we were looking at, at other costs and looking at the, the primary cost before we made that decision there.
Okay, so we'll move on, and we have a second public comment period, and it's all around.
I can announce that older Americans, I'll be looking forward to lots of attention. Good evening, Commissioners, good evening, County Managers, good evening, Clerk. I come before you this evening not as just a Board of Education member, but I also come before you as a retired school administrator. A retired school administrator who understands the devastation that an educational community feels when they are losing positions. But first, I want to say thank you to you for what you do. I learned from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners that the average people, the average current pupil expenditure is around one thousand, six hundred and forty-three. And you, our wonderful Gates County Commissioners, give us a tad bit more than what the average is. So please let me go and say thank you for that. However, that is not going to prohibit me from asking you for just a wee bit more. At our elementary schools this coming year, we're going to lose three teaching positions. We are also going to lose three teaching assistant positions. Now, I think you all know that the state allocates money for small classrooms in K through three. They do not do that in fourth and fifth grade. That's why I come before you today, because we are going to be losing teachers that would normally teach at those grade levels. Now, I also want you to think, you know, my grandchildren are pretty blessed, and I look at all of you up here, and I know your children, grandchildren, nieces and nephews and children are not going to be the ones that are truly impacted by the teachers that are going to be lost. Most likely, those children that are going to be impacted by those children are not the ones that have a solid support systems like each of you provide to your children. Instead, those students, and these are the ones I want you to think about with what I'm saying, instead, those students are going to be the ones who don't come to kindergarten ready to read. They're going to be the ones who at third grade, when the class size differs, that are not reading proficient, but still are able to be moved on to the fourth and fifth grades. One of those students may be from the thirty-three point six percent of families that live in Gates County who live below the poverty level. Those students may be from the fifty-four percent of students that daily get their meals from the, from pre and reduced lunch. They also may be one of the eighty-seven children who we send food home with every single weekend so that they're going to have food and not be hungry during the weekend, because the majority of their food is there at school breakfast and lunch. They are also going to be the children who have difficulty learning. They're going to be the ones who struggle more, they have learning problems, they have some behavior issues, they're just not ready and are just not as pliable as all of our students. There are kids who don't have internet in our county. There are kids who don't have, who have parents who are working two or three jobs, and those parents don't have time to get the kids to the library, to help them with their homework. Those kids are the kids that are in those elementary schools that are profiting from having a full grouping of teachers. I ask you to think about those children. I ask you to think about what the loss of six positions at Buckland and at TS Cooper are going to mean to those educators. And I brought with me a very impactful and much more complicated than my three minutes, which I thought was three minutes, but now I know it's five. But I brought with you, and I brought with me an article to give you that Ms. Buckston, who was the principal at TS Cooper, wrote, and I think this will help put things in perspective if I may pass that out to you. I also learned from the North Carolina School Boards, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, that last year, there was a reported four percent raise in what the per pupil expenditure was. Now, my understanding is from looking at the present budget presentation, that we are looking, is that my time? You're kidding? I've got two more sentences, can I do it?
Two sentences.
Two sentences, okay. Four percent increase. I ask you to go back to the drawing board and look at that two point, the two million, eight hundred and eight thousand dollars, that is the same amount of money that you gave us last year. I ask you to ponder, that's three sentences, I ask you to ponder, looking at that four percent raise and thinking what a difference you can make in the lives of children in Gates County if you choose so to do. I'm a good counter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ryan.
Okay, Wade Ascue.
I live 216 White Oak Road, New York, North Carolina. I'm a Commissioner and Lane Manager and Rescue Squad. I really appreciate all the work Rescue Squad has done for this county. My uncle used to be the captain. I don't know if any of y'all, but I know there's Leon Howard, who was the captain of Rescue Squad for several years. But as I sat there behind the Commissioner's seat, I always learned there were always solutions to a problem. Do, do your research. You may have to dig deeper than you want to, you may have to spend more hours than you want to, but there, there is a solution and there is an answer. They still raise the citizens' taxes fifteen or twenty cents. You might say, and some people might say, well, that's not a lot. Well, compared to our neighbors, I know some of our neighbors' taxes have a tax rate of ninety-one, ninety-six cents. So we could be in line with them. But what you're not looking at is our property pay is always double what theirs are. So at that, at that rate, our taxes right now should be sort of way in the line of maybe fifty cents. But, but do your research and just think about the citizens of the county. That, and if you do have to do anything, make it fast, like Marilyn Carroll said, don't just throw a tax item at that rate just on everybody. But we have businesses here in the county that are struggling to survive. Every time taxes go up, that's another day of unemployment. We, senior citizens here in the county living on sixteen, that's, that's another meal of two or three that week that's taken off their table. It's a bad situation, and I agree with y'all, but there is an answer. I know when I sat there behind that board, they've been struggling for years trying to find a solution just to the parking you engage with during the court day, Monday. And there was a solution. I said, I can get those changed, Commissioner, meet you Wednesday. Problem solved. So there is a solution without raising taxes for everything. That saves the taxpayers two to three hundred thousand dollars, just that one, one decision, that one move. So do some, do some real deep research, deeper than maybe what you really want to. But there is an answer, I can promise you that. Thank y'all very much, and thank you Rescue Squad.
Thank you. Uh, wait, Earl Reiner.
I've done it. I've got a goose myself, I'm still the same Earl Lamb tree, better known as Earl's World. I have several things to say. Now, I'm getting back to the real Earl Lamb tree, Jonathan, and the other was just Congress said, and Jack, and all of you, Jack's phone talking about it, ringing, people telling him what to do. Well, here's the number one issue here tonight, this week, this year, is its falseness that we're putting out. You're keeping the, and you know, as politicians, out of the way, it's called spin. And if you watch Fox News, there's a whole bunch of them up there in Washington that's spinning all the time. But when you raise the taxes from seven to six cent, and call it seven to six cent, when in reality it's ninety-one cent, that's called spin. And this is the number one thing that y'all did not address, you made a spin on it. Now, my next question, and some of these I decided maybe I won't want to get into, I get back with Natalie and pass them on to you, but one of the questions that came up to me was last year's budget, the Rescue Squad was about four hundred thousand, that's right, you've got the computer, I, I'm kind of old, don't even know that. And then we moved it up, and that's a kind of a strange figure, we knocked off, so again, see, one thousand, I mean, one being three hundred, we want to make it a little less. But that's four hundred, in other words, we take the four hundred out. Where's that four hundred gone to? You know? That was a question that's been asked me, and these were asked by me, people, some of these people have been in the state government, and asked me, where did the four hundred thousand go to? And why did we jump from four hundred thousand to one million, three hundred thousand? I think that's a question, I'm sure it's a legitimate question, and I, I think that we, the public needs to know these answers. And I come in here, and y'all look at me, and you're not going to give them to me, because I've been up here so many times, I knew the system, you know, and, but they are legitimate questions. Mr. Harold, I thought this was a great idea, it's a fair idea, but before I say what he said it was a fair idea, this is a question I want to answer. And it's told me, Tom Morgan, the county manager, who, the fire department comes running the Department of Insurance, right? Okay, who is the Rescue Squad coming up?
Office of EMS.
Okay, well, what, who is in charge of that, you know? I mean, most of, everything, like we've got an insurance commissioner, and, well, I can find this out, but you just said it was that, but somebody up there in Raleigh's in charge, and that's the man I got to go see. Unfortunately, it doesn't come under the insurance department, who's a friend of mine. But I think that that was the thing that I wanted to know. Is this one point, three million dollars something that we expect to do every year? Do y'all expect to do that every year? You don't have any answers, we ain't gonna have. I mean, I, I asked that question. I mean, I didn't realize until tonight that actually, Tom, I'll speak to Tom because I know him, and we've done business, but this included a new Rescue Squad regimen, right? Is that right?
Staffing. Not a physical truck, staffing.
A truck, something.
On two cruises.
That's where the money is going. It didn't have anything to do with capital layout. So the question is to you, before my time is up, and this is why you'll see so much on this, is that, are we going to, how did we get in this hole? And is this hole going to be there every year? Jonathan, you've got a job to do to cut these expenditures, and I want to see some action. Because somewhere down the line, you know, we are spending money, and Linda just mentioned it through that tonight, everybody wants something. And it's, we can't give everybody everything, but in closing, Mr. Harold, the only fair way to do this, if we're not going to put it in the general fund, and we're going to tack it on as an additional tax, is to do it as a household tax of two hundred and sixty-five dollars a year, across the board, everybody. And if that's legal, we'll find out if that's legal, Jonathan, and that would be the only fair way to do it, and that is the very best statement I've heard tonight. Thank you, Mr. Harold.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Okay. Marilyn Carroll.
I don't have anything else left.
Carol Ward.
Hey, I'm Carol Ward. The Commissioners, County Manager, thank y'all for giving eighty-seven brief counseling this thing, place a little fun, County Bureau. I do have a few, a few additional questions for just things that I understand, Ms. Reiner has to present a balanced budget to the state, they're required, and if you don't present a balanced budget, then they get all up in arms, they come in, and they start taking over our company. That's absolutely not the rule. We don't need politicians from Raleigh, running Gates County, I get that. I understand from, the story's presentation is three hundred thousand dollars in the rear year, I get that. How do we do, does it go to collections? These are things, these are questions that need to be asked. What is our billing? Five seventy-five for our average VLS, seven hundred fifty for our average ALS, a thousand plus for high-level ALS, you know, something where you call it helicopter, they come in from up. If the patient's not paying any bills, then we need to figure out how we can reach them. It's, it's a service that we provide, however, it's not free to us as a county. And it's proven by ten percent of the people generating. And it's proven back 10% of the people generate 90% of your calls. I'm sure the company can give you the frequent flyers, and other, those people sitting there far up, can give you your frequent flyers, they go to, you hear the same address come out on the pager, and you know who it is. Charged for refuse, when you go there and they want to go to hospital, they call, they tie your unit up, you spend gas, you spend, and you, that's, that's the way you were able to recoup money for a non-transport. Also charged by the bill, by the load amount, our transport's 20, 30 miles, nine dollars a mile, that's 270 on top of 750 down here, a thousand dollars. These are avenues we need, we need to look at in order to recoup some of the money, try to give, try to gain some of that 300,000 back. In the interim, if we're having calls that don't want to answer, have you looked at, looked at the avenue in the MOU, this is a memorandum of understanding or memorandum of agreement, within the joint's county. Can we call Harford County if they have an extra answer, they will, can we call Suffolk, can we call Chawan County, can we call, can we call Passau, it just depends on where it's at. You get a MOU with that county, then we send an M truck if they need it, and they send one for us. If there's any downtown paramedic, if we look at doing non-emergency dialysis, dialysis transport, we can give reimbursement here. All of those things that falls around, payer mix and reimbursement. If you're not giving those two things, then we need to look at those avenues to try to fund a portion of this, and I'm not saying to not give them the money. If they need the money, by all means, I'm the first person to say that, it's what I do for a living, I give it. If they need the money, then, then we need to fund, but we need to exhaust every avenue we can to make sure we're getting all the revenue we can get possibly back, and just Rescue Squad keep the money, because they're separate, any of it is to go back to the general fund, I don't, I don't know how that works either. Just, just food for thought, and I've got plenty more ideas if y'all, if y'all, thank y'all for your time, I appreciate it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Brett Harold, 144 Seals, 23rd Road, Sunbury, North Carolina. I might speak this all about, I can be real good at this, but, and my brother-in-law's always said what I was going to say anyway. I just feel like the, the money that the Rescue Squad needs, needs to be distributed over everyone in the county, and not feel like just because this person owns farms, or this person owns chicken houses, they have to pay a larger portion of money that Rescue Squad needs than people that don't. Just because we make our living that way, does make, does not mean we make it better living, does not mean we make more money, it's just the way we make our living. And that's about all I got to say.
Okay. Is it, is anyone else wanting to have an opportunity to speak, Mr. Kipper? We try to be very lenient.
We allow extra long run-on sentences, too. We'll try to cut that to a minimum. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to come to this session, since I've already signed up. I've got two topics, the first one is very brief. Who are you proposing will issue the illegal burning citations? Very bottom of the budget, from the fees. Illegal burning is a new fee. Who's going to issue that? So it's going to be?
We're not addressing, I'm not addressing those questions, Mike.
Okay, so that's a question I have, so let's.
I'm not, I'm not.
So let's go on to Rescue Squad, okay? So we're going to triple the money to double the staff. Man, I've got a lot of questions. So let me go through some things, real quick. Accountability is what I'm really concerned about, you know, when we went this past year to 410,000, that sparked interest, it should have sparked interest for over 300, now we're talking about 1.3? Are we getting independent audits? Do we know where the money's being spent? I've done a lot of research in the last two days, going to do a lot more, and I'd like to know, have y'all seen independent audits? Have you seen the 909 online, the 2017, 2018 909, it's not available? And note, that's not an independent audit. I think at this point, with the, that kind of budget, yeah, maybe it needs to be a county department. You know, I would have been totally against it, being a volunteer firefighter myself, but they're down to, you know, one volunteer half, so I think it's time for it to become a county department, that's what it seems like to me. That would give more accountability, where are the downside? I don't know, I'm sure there are. It would probably give better benefits for those employees who have caused more, I don't know, but we're going to address that in a second. Let's compare Harper County. I took the liberty to go online and look at the budget, excuse me, the audits for the last four years. And interestingly enough, the total expenditures in Harper County, a little million dollars, started out in 2015, a little over a million, a little over a million for '16, 1.1 and change for '17, 1.3 in '18, actually less than the 1.4 that was budgeted. So, yeah, that sounds about right. Well, the big part that I'm not talking about yet, that I'm getting ready to talk about, is their fees. They got 873,000 in '15, in 2016, between ambulance, Rescue Squad fees, and EMS call share, which I understand that comes from reimbursement from Medicare or something like that, that was about 880. They got almost a million in 2017, and over a million in 2018. So what's the bottom line? What was their net cost? In 2015, it's 215,000. 2016 is 148,000. 2017, 178,000. Last, the budget ended last year, 2018, 257,827 dollars. That's two ambulances fully staffed, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. So it sounds like a million, if we could do the same thing they're doing to 410,000's too much. Certainly don't need 1.2 million. So, you know, I may be missing something, there might be something we've been trying to miss, and so, you know, I'm, I'm like the little kid goes around, why, why, why? I ask questions. So I've talked to a lot of people, a lot of people have called me recently, and that's, that there's answers that we need, and we want accountability, that's one of the big things, so I'm sure you will be getting some more emails from me this week. Thank you for your time.
And I would just thank you for all these comments and ideas, and certainly we'll take those on the advice, and tomorrow night, we will have a work session on budget, we will do EMS, for the EMS court.
There's a department that's coming at 6 o'clock tomorrow night, already.
Already, so we'll have, what do you think about?
15 minutes, I would guess. Because in between, we'll start going through each department.
Yeah. Yeah, we have this book to go through, by budgets for all the departments, that we have to go through page by page, line by line. 6 o'clock, we will start talking, discussing EMS.
No, no mail, at 6:30.
Sorry, 6:00, excuse me, I meant 6:30. Okay, so, but we know it is a work session, so you will be able to listen to the discussion we are having with EMS personnel as well. I mean, we will get questions then, talk to them.
And I would encourage people to come, because some of the questions that were not answered, that I even did not answer, will be addressed tomorrow night in greater detail as we go through the budget and go through the big schedule.
Commissioners' comments, let's start by Commissioner James.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry I was late tonight, I was watching my oldest, in her sixth grade band performance last time in band, so sometimes family comes first, but it went quick and was able to make it out. We'll watch the video, Warren does a good job with our videos, posting to the county website, if you're not able to make our meetings, you need to take the time to watch them. With that being said, it sounds like I missed a lot of, or a number of public comments, that's the comments at the beginning. We've got a budget workshop starting tomorrow, so if there's something that we haven't, if we haven't already talked, and there's something you want me to know before we go into the budget process, see me after tonight's meeting. There's a few good things, we always look at the negative, sometimes at the positive. The high school baseball team just won the conference championship, our track team went to Greensboro this weekend and got second, the girls' 4x400, I think relay team got second in the state, number of state rankings. I look out in the audience, I see Deja, Deja was elected to student body president at William Peace University, is that right? Got that right. That's a big accomplishment for Gates County girls, and let's give her a round of applause. She's always doing good things, and I look forward to seeing what she's going to do else. DirecTV info, is that just what I?
It was just for your information, they said that they were going to look into it, they did say that there would be additional costs if the channels were added, but it's still in their report.
That was, that was a topic that was brought up to me a couple of months ago, I was excited to see that there's a possibility that we could get a North Carolina news channel on DirecTV, looks like the videos from the correspondence I saw, might not be interesting, or if they are, it's going to cost us more money, but DirecTV seems more interesting, so that's exciting, something that came up in the last few months. Again, thank y'all for coming, don't stop coming, just because one topic is on your mind, and for those of you that want to chat before the budget workshops, see me after the meeting, thank y'all.
Thank you, Jonathan. Certainly appreciate everyone being here, and not to just reiterate, I know why you're here, I feel like I know why you're here, I hear why you're here, we heard from you prior to this meeting, and, and everyone, as I see the faces, I heard from a lot of you on telephone, we heard a lot from a lot of you face to face. These are decisions that we make, but they're because you bring them to us, and I want you to be aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for being here, and we appreciate your input, we're sincere about your input. Now, we have a couple of things handed to us that members of the EMS might want to get a copy of, and I think we should provide that to them in the leading up to the budget session. Again, thank you for being here.
I too, we'd like to thank everyone for coming, I would like to see this many at all our county Commissioner meetings. We are, we do listen to you, we do answer our phones, and our texts, and our emails, and you can stop us at the brochure, well, not the brochure, but maybe Family Dollar or General, uh, Family Dollar or General, uh, Dollar General, I can't remember who they, and, you know, we are available, and we try, I mean, we are working hard to come up with solutions to, for problems, because we are all taxpayers as well, and we want, but we also want to provide enough funds for the Rescue Squad. So we will do the best we can to come up with a solution. Tomorrow night, our workshop, 6:30.
Begins at 5:30.
But 6 o'clock, we have one department coming in, 6:30, we have EMS. So have a safe trip, and if you can come back tomorrow night to listen, please do, or to see us in between, or answer some questions, or give us questions. Thank you so much. And at this time, I've submitted a motion to adjourn. I'll let them adjourn, they, uh, we are officially.